Okay. We are now gonna enter into deliberation. The last couple of years, we've actually broke it this time and kinda gone our ways to think about what we've heard. What I'd like to do this year, again, I think in part because this is a very challenging year with macro issues to deal with, regional, state, et cetera. What I'd like to do is to, for the next however long, go through what I call category one accounts. Those are accounts that the increase in those accounts limited things like mandatory contractual or obligations of increase that are nondiscretionary. None of those accounts will have contracted services. Then hopefully, we get three of those tonight, and great. My, I would like us to hold these meetings to about three hours, you know, give or take. I feel like after three hours, people are tired and we stop paying attention and we don't give the accounts their due in consideration. So we'll go on for, you know, the next hour and a half, hour fifteen minutes, going through hopefully the easy accounts, kinda that category one. Tomorrow, we'll come back, we start at seven. To the extent we haven't gotten all of the way through the category one accounts, we'll finish those and then go into, again, what I refer to as category two accounts. Those are accounts that have some changes in them, they seem explainable, they at least need a discussion, and we'll, we'll cover off those. Holding off for the end, what I refer to as category three accounts, and those are like the big five. Based on what I think we've heard and what we see, the big five would be the Board of Ed, operating, lump it together with maintenance, the lease department, highway department, and then the four twenty accounts. And we'll save those for the end in reverse order. So Board of Ed, operating and maintenance will be last. Penultimate, or just before last, will be police department, and we'll go this way. So with that approach, let's start with, yeah, good.
Here's a question. Once we go through these, if we're not satisfied at the end of the deliberations, we can always go back
Go through them again.
and see the accounts again and see if we wanna make any additional changes, correct?
Yep. It's gonna be somewhat iterative, right? We'll figure out what we, where we are at the end of it, and if we like it, we're done, and if not...
So Bob, are you, I'm sorry, I missed a part of that. Are we trying to get through everything tomorrow, and if we don't, we'll do Thursday? Or is the notion that we'll schedule the big category three accounts for Thursday?
We certainly can do it that way. I was anticipating just going through them in those category accounts.
Do as much as we can.
An agenda has already been set for Thursday, so whatever do, you know, however long you go on the process, you're good for Thursday.
Well, we can just recess this meeting.
Yeah, but I mean, the agendas are...
What is our drop dead date that we have to be done by for publication and all that?
I would just like to make a request since this is gonna be very laborious work, that we, one person at a time, speak and try to limit the sidebars, because it really does get overwhelming, and it would be great if we could do that.
I will operate that rule with heavy hands.
Oh, Chad, go get 'em, wow.
Can I also make another suggestion, Bob? Could we actually raise our hands when we wanna talk and wait for Bob to call us? So two people want to...
You're the only one to raise your hand.
Well, like, because I'm half civil.
And you never get called on.
That's called being a civil, and we teach that to our kids, right? Yeah, I'd like to speak.
But you don't get called on.
Well, how about this? If there's nobody speaking, you can jump in.
Okay.
If there are a couple of people speaking...
I'll just continue to raise my hand, everyone else can do what they want.
So again, category one, I have about six, I have sixteen accounts, sixteen of the thirty-seven in category one, sixteen of the thirty-seven in category two, and five in that category three, top five.
Sorry, let's go.
All right, starting with, yes?
Just testing, just to see if it worked.
I saw it, I saw it.
Starting with department one hundred, selectmen's office. I will make a motion, we'll need to get it seconded, for discussion, that we accept the amount proposed in department one hundred as proposed by the Board of Selectmen at two hundred ninety-five thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Second.
All right, discussion. First part I wanna bring up, there is contracted services in this account. And if you recall, I said we weren't going to put contracted services in category one. The contracted service here is the leased automobile for the first selectman. That automobile was leased, right, previously by the Public Works Director. The car that was leased for the first selectman was, came off lease, returned to the lessor, and so the first selectman stepped into this car. It's the best account for this, this item, but it is not really what we, I think, think of typically as contracted service. So I didn't wanna, I didn't want folks to think we immediately got off on an exception. I do, this is an account where we'll see most of the changes are in, in salaries, in mandatory salaries. So with all that, discussion of department one hundred.
This isn't a lease to own, this is a three-year lease that we're turning in.
Yes.
Who's turning, from the first?
The first one is... So we're leasing something new.
This was leased back in September, August, sometime, you know, last year. And then the Public Works Director moved on, and we had the car sitting there, so it didn't make sense to lease another car.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking, this is just, this is a leased vehicle. This is not like a lease to own.
Nope, nope, nope.
There's two years left on the lease, whatever, and got it.
But Matt's car went back, I'm sorry?
Matt's car went back, yep.
And then he just took this one.
It went back because it came off leases.
That's right.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, Mr. Chairman. What part of that, I don't recall what part of the salary has to do with EDC and why that's even in here? The EDC, is that some, a salary increase that the director is going to get from the first selectman?
EDC picks up fifty percent of her salary, and the town picks up the other fifty percent.
Okay.
Bob, I think, it's been that way.
Well, yes, so it's this...
From the start.
But you're talking, you're calling that a cost driver, that's why I'm asking. Because the grease adding hours in HR, okay, got that, benefits and economic development. So what is the increase that is attributed to economic development? That's my question.
She became a full-time employee.
When did that happen?
Last year. I think it was after we set our budget. I'd have to find the timing of that.
Yeah, 'cause that, I mean, it's just a little...
I think it was like September, maybe September. I think it was supposed to go July first, and then it didn't happen until a little bit later on.
Okay, 'cause that's just a little confusing with the amounts here, so that's why I ask, okay.
Any further discussion? Motion on the table, it's been seconded. All those in favor of the motion to accept department one hundred as proposed at two ninety-five, five eighty-six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bear with me while I shift to the next account.
Before you finish shifting, do you think that, are we gonna have, 'cause I think last year we said something about we were targeting a specific percentage increase that we thought the town would be able to sustain or approve? And I didn't know if we were going with that, with any sort of philosophy in our discussions, or any direction, or any...
I, I think we'll, that'll come up while we discuss most likely the category two and category three accounts. Okay, let's go. I will make a motion to accept department one-ten treasurer at the amount proposed of five thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Discussion. Literally. So all those, just make sure there's no hands up, okay. All those in favor, I'm sorry, that was inappropriate, all those in favor of accepting department one-ten treasurer at the amount proposed of five hundred and fifty, excuse me, five thousand, five hundred dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The next category one account, department one-twenty finance. Sorry, scrolling here. I will make a motion to accept department one-twenty finance as submitted for the total amount of four hundred sixty-seven thousand ninety-nine dollars.
Second.
Discussion. Brian?
I guess, Bob, the change in the salary line comes out to like sixteen thousand, is that, that's divided by four or five employees?
There's five, five of us up there.
So that's just basically raises and stepping, whatever.
But Lauren, the purchasing agent, was hired at a lower step.
That's she got a step increase.
And so she went to the top, plus she gets a contractual increase too, so that kinda distorts the increase there.
Any further discussion? Okay, with a motion on the table to accept department one-twenty, finance department at the proposed amount of four hundred sixty-seven thousand ninety-nine dollars, please signify, are those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next account, department one-thirty, town clerk. I will make, I will make...
Chad, we know, we know who you are.
I need, I need a little time.
You have a sign?
We need a little time, kinda been waiting for this one.
Don't speak.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that department one-thirty town clerk is accepted at the proposed level of two hundred thirty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Since Lisa's here, I just wanted, do you, do you have any idea of what your revenue is? Like, I, I probably have that somewhere, but...
I gave you the breakdown, it's on your program. I gave you that whole breakdown, the, the revenue.
You may, you made it at another meeting.
No, it's attached.
It's loaded in.
Okay.
It's attached.
Yeah, all right, hold on.
I don't have it off the top of my head.
That's all right.
It's thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands.
I'll find it.
Thousands of dollars.
Thousands, I know.
Eighteen nineteen was under retained, is that what?
Yes.
Yeah, so retained was five hundred ninety-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars. And between July first through, oh, I'm sorry, between July first and
Yeah, it was four.
December thirty-first was three hundred and eighty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars. So one could make the same logic that in the next six months, she could...
Land records are way high up there, so, and conveyance tax.
Yes, dear.
Lisa, I remember one year we had cut a little bit from the election expenses. Did that create an issue that year, did we end up being short?
That year, no. However, this year is the presidential, and we can't cut it a hundred percent.
So you think you'll use ultimately five thousand, about a dollar?
Let's put it this way, I'm very close to using in twenty sixteen.
It was close to twenty-five?
Yes, and if I go over, if you cut me and I go over, you still gotta pay for it. So I think there will be a little bit extra, it's very hard to, I mean, the cost of the ballots are high, mailing, all that stuff, legal notices, I mean, printing, it has to be funded, all the ballots have to be at a hundred percent of, every voter has to have a ballot who's elected and who's registered to vote. We don't wanna bridge for it. I mean, maybe five hundred, but that's...
I'm not, like, I just think this is a budget year where a five hundred dollar cut matters when you look at the total numbers. I don't wanna be short of these lines, and I certainly respect what you do a hundred percent, you know that, and I don't wanna create issues, but, you know, years past, people said, well, what's five hundred bucks? I mean, you do that, you know, thirty times, that's a meaningful number in the grand scheme of things, you know? So that's why I'm just trying to get the numbers as close as we can without putting ourselves in jeopardy of saying, ooh, well, that was stupid. So, you know, I don't wanna do anything that's gonna hurt your department, you know that, but I just wanna get these numbers as close to possible, you know, that's my feeling.
You know what I would suggest?
Sure.
Is that I would keep it at this, you get to the point where you're negotiating and you think that, you know, you need to save five hundred dollars, go back and look at it.
Yeah, we're gonna go back anyway.
I respect that, thank you.
And Lisa, just to make sure we're on the same page, this is account fifty-two fifty, election expense?
Yes.
All right, so I've got it on a list, I'm sure we are gonna have it on a list to perhaps go back and revisit. At this point, let's finish out the, the motion of accepting it as...
I just didn't want her to have to come back.
She'll be better, she'll be better by then, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so with a motion on the table and seconded, I'd ask all those who are in favor of accepting department one-thirty town clerk at the proposed amount of two hundred thirty-eight thousand five fifty-seven, to please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, Lisa.
My pleasure.
You're more than welcome to go home if you want.
Okay, I'm leaving.
Okay, the next category one account is one-forty assessor. Again, for purposes of discussion, I make the motion that we accept for department one-forty assessor. The balance as proposed by the Board of Selectmen, two hundred forty thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
I'll second.
Discussion. Brian?
The only line that I see where there's actually an increase, and again, it's one of those things, is it a set number, or is there a five hundred dollar wiggle room or anything like that, is auditing, you have, you found out two thousand this year?
I found that, I have that number here, I think it's on that sheet that I gave you. The last audit we did, let me find it, of course, I'm not in order here, I gained about, for the two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen year, we, that was sixty, seventy, eighty-five thousand dollars I, I got back. So for the ten thousand that I spent, we made eighty-five thousand.
Okay.
Now, I can't guarantee every time I'm gonna make that, you know, I might do and pick some audits and maybe not make as much, I could pick an audit and make more. It really is, you know, you try to pick the companies that you think need to file correctly. It also adds in the future, because now nineteen, they'll file better, twenty, they'll file, so it, it also helps in the future, not only that immediate, you know, that immediate eighty-five thousand. So I increased it 'cause I can then do more accounts.
So it'll increase revenue, is what you think?
Hopefully.
And Bob and/or Brad, is that consist, is that assumption consistent with what you're including on the revenue line?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, the more audits that Izzy can do, the more money theoretically we can make. You know, and like she said, once they do the audit, they put them on a straight and narrow, so to speak, and they'll continue. But if you don't audit somebody, they just continue to do it the way they were doing it.
What's the average cost of an audit?
It could be anywhere, depending on a big, you know, company, that was ten audits. Bigger companies, you know, it might be a thousand dollars. If I do a smaller company, it could be eight hundred dollars. So about an a, you know, a thousand an average, 'cause it's three years of the audit.
Yes, Wendy?
It's working nice.
Yeah.
I don't like it.
I don't like it either.
Have we ever had a year or a time when you have done an audit on a company and we've lost money?
We may not have lost money, but we didn't, there may be an account that I may not, and it could've been a good filing. So you, it's, it's nothing, we didn't make any money, we did spend a thousand dollars or eight hundred dollars to do it, but the others, we, like, it picked up on. So not every company is always gonna, you know, it's gonna, sometimes they file pretty good.
I think, I think the perception is, though, if she continues to do auditing, the word gets around the community that it's happening, and if somebody was, they straighten out their act.
So you got deterrence value, and then you got collection rate?
Compliance, compliance.
Wendy?
So in your expert assessing opinion, would you say that it's better to fund these than to not fund them?
Yes.
Yeah, this one seems a little different because we've got revenue coming in.
Could you speak up, um...
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just...
Raise your hand.
Me or Bob?
Could you speak up, um...
I was just saying, this seems a little different because we have a pretty solid revenue number to go with the...
I was just asking.
Yeah, that's a great question.
What is the revenue number?
Eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-five thousand. It was exactly, I can tell you, I did it...
She promises we'll pick up another seventeen thousand if you average it up.
We gained in sixteen, we gained thirty thousand seven sixty-eight. Seventeen, it was thirty-three thousand nine oh two, and eighteen, it was twenty-three thousand one twenty-four.
So that's per year, the eighty thousand was over three years.
Which over the three years, that's right.
So eighty-five thousand was over three years, correct?
Ten companies, three years audit.
Any further discussion? Right, not, not hearing any further discussion, I have a motion on the table, it's been seconded to accept as submitted the department one-forty assessor budget at two hundred forty thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. All those who are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next account, one-fifty tax collector. For purposes of discussion, I'll make a motion that we accept the department one-fifty tax collector fiscal year twenty-one budget at the proposed amount of two hundred twelve thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Second.
Okay, discussion then.
And how much revenue do, do you bring in? Sorry.
Eighty-one million.
Eighty-one million.
Not quite. Izzy wants credit for that.
I'm not so... And what discovered lipstick value?
Really?
Collection rate?
Last year it was ninety-nine point two seven.
What, what's it been?
Last year was ninety-nine point two seven.
And we're still seeing kinda that trending?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
She's good at what she does.
My staff is excellent. I, I have to give a lot of credit to my staff, they work very, very hard.
And Ann, is there anything you can do in the interim periods to track that number, to kinda give us an early warning if it starts to deviate? Or do you have to just really wait to the quarters?
Well, I, I mean, I do the monthly report, and when I presented my budget, we were right on track. In January, we were at seventy-five percent, so, I mean, you know, there have been years, two thousand seven, to be exact, that we were not on track. We looked at the revenue numbers and we were down, and there was a spending freeze, and, you know, two thousand seven was a bad year. That's when everything bottomed out and dropped. And so, you know, collection numbers then, I think, were probably around ninety-eight in the end, but we, we discussed it, Barry and I, at the time, when they dropped, because I was nervous, I honestly would tell you, it was a very scary time. A lot of houses in foreclosure, a lot of houses people just walked away from, so, you know, this is, we're flush now.
Oh, don't say that, don't say that, you put the malocchi on us.
It's, 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 um...
Having gone through that very difficult period, I think we all remember it, what, what lessons were learned again? And, and like, we're trying to be proactive in seeing what's out in the marketplace?
Well, I think if you look at my budget over the past ten, fifteen years even, there really has been very minimal changes. And it's because we've instituted a number of things that have saved money, and I probably haven't always expressed it very well. This year here, we saved a lot of money on postage because I went with the club billing. Last year, I saved a lot more money on envelopes because I changed the supplier and got them much cheaper. You know, technology has helped us keep things tracked, but you also have to take in consideration that a lot of responsibilities from the state have been pushed out to us as far as motor vehicle reporting and stuff like that. So my office has stayed at the same staff number, same staff level, and even almost, I don't wanna say a flat budget, but we've really only gone up maybe a thousand, two thousand dollars each year. You know, it's, we're not having big jumps because we are working very hard to get things stable.
And, and what about, again, just kinda seeing around corners, like, what's coming, defaults coming?
Well, you know, I always look. I mean, this year here, I can tell you right now, every plow guy in the world that went out and bought a new plow is gonna be struck by the head. So I have some regulars, you know, they're just our people that are in that business, and I just kinda stay on them, you know, we, we just watch them a little bit more. I give a lot of stuff now quicker to the collection agency. That agency also has helped me sell, save postage, they take that whole suspense list, they do the mailings on those at no cost to us. So by doing that, we, we're saving on some of our postage in that area there. So those are a few things that we've done, but, you know, you stay on them, you just have to always do what we do.
Sure, and in two thousand seven, you mentioned you saw this going on in the marketplace, right, that the economy was, was lapsing.
Absolutely. Literally had people buy houses and not pay a penny in taxes ever for three or four years.
And then you, you mentioned you reached out to Barry, you guys worked together. Do we still have kinda quick response reporting in place to be able to know as soon as possible as to whether or not the faults are up and we start pulling in expenses?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we go to the Board of Ed, and they, that, that time, they, they shut down too.
Yes, the Board of Ed stopped everything that they were doing, they shut down, they saved a lot of money. They gave back furlough days, the classified service union here stopped, we got no raises, raises were frozen. You know, there were a lot of things that were put in play that time because we were in a real jeopardy situation. And in the end, you know, we still came in with the numbers, but for a period of time, the numbers just were not there. It was, you know, some really...
Right, it's probably, look, it's no surprise when I'm asking the questions, like, globally, nationally, regionally, we're facing into some real uncertainties. Not time to panic, but time to really kinda, you know, be a risk manager.
But I will say this, that at that time there, the banks were very unprepared for what happened, and so was the federal government. And right now, the banks are more prepared than they ever were to handle what happened. I mean, we would get no response from the bank when, you know, even if I had a tax sale, they weren't responding. So properties, I had properties that sold in tax sale that had banks, and six months later, when the property's gone, they're coming and trying to pay it. And it's like, no, it's too late, you guys lost your place. So, you know, there, you know, there are mechanisms in place that we do, you know? People don't wanna hear it, tax sale is one of them, you know, we have to, you know, we, I have a responsibility to the town to, you know, maintain, you know, our fiscal standing, you know, so there's things that we do, you know, and, you know, we're aware, and certainly if I thought that the numbers were in jeopardy, I would go to Bob. I mean, and he looks at the reports too, it's not like he doesn't look to see where we are, you know? I supply reports monthly to finance, for finance, I mean, to finance.
Finance department. Okay. Any other questions? All right, with a motion on the table seconded, we'll vote, all those in favor of accepting department one-fifty... All right, um, with a motion on the table seconded, we'll vote. All those in favor of accepting Department one fifty tax collector budget as proposed, two hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be, we'll be watching things closely, Anne, what's going on in the macro. God, oh, you helping us. All right, moving on to the next category. One account is one seventy. It's the probate office. We skip over one sixty.
That's number two.
Yes. Yeah. So the, the next category, one account, Department one seventy probate office. Uh, for purposes of discussion, I will make a motion that we accept Department one seventy probate office.
Second.
As, as, um, as proposed, five thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. We have a second. Any questions?
Thank you, lady.
Discussion.
Good night.
Okay, not hearing any. All those in favor of the motion. We have a motion, wait one second, and all those in favor of the motion.
Aye.
Uh, accepted. There you go. Next, category one account, Department two hundred social services. Make a motion to accept Department two hundred social services at the proposed amount of eighty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars.
Second.
Discussion. Not hearing any, or? Not hearing any discussion. Motion on the table, seconded. All those in favor of accepting two ten, uh, excuse me, two hundred social services as proposed, eighty-nine, two eighty-nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next category, one account, Department two ten town insurance. For purposes of discussion, I'll make a motion that we accept two ten town insurance at the proposed level of one million, three hundred, ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Discussion. Wendy?
Can we just make that one dollar more?
Who said that?
I think you brought that up last year.
Yes. Absolutely not.
You gonna increase the budget?
Well, I, I guess there is that magic marketing tool.
It's a deal.
That's, it's, it's.
Twenty-nine ninety-nine.
Twenty-nine ninety-nine, nine ninety-nine.
I'm sorry, sir.
Brian.
Bob, if we change any of the personnel requests or anything like that, will it make any change in this line? Or is it not something you could really compute?
Now, um, we do get an audit at the end of the year, but, you know, sometimes there's a, a small payment that's made and sometimes there's a small, um, credit. So it really doesn't, yeah, it doesn't. And that's only, that, that's only on the workers' comp side. You know, you don't get that on the lap. It is what it is with the lap. That's what the charging.
Any further discussion? Okay. Motion on the table has been seconded. All those in favor of accepting two ten town insurance as initially proposed for one million, three hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Done. Next category, one account is Department two ninety, emergency management. For purposes of discussion, I'll make a motion that we accept Department two ninety emergency management at the proposed level of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and six dollars.
Second.
Discussion. Again, this is, the increase is the, uh, tower lease.
For emergency management?
Isn't it?
Supplies is the big increase. Supplies was ten thousand.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's core supplies. That's the tower.
All that's least, yeah.
Yeah. We don't have a category for, we don't have a category for tower. So whenever you use a number that's been used already, that category comes up automatically. So sometimes you would see purchasing agent, it first used in our department. But you might see them, you know, if you looked at the detail in public works or whatever, they don't have a purchasing agent, but that's that category. It's just a function of municipal system.
There was the increase in the, it's the new cell panel lease. I'm following this.
He has a very good point. I'm sorry. He had a very good point here.
All right. Any more discussion? All right, we have a motion on the table. It's been seconded. All those in favor of accepting Department two ninety emergency management at the proposed level of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and six dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next account in category one, Department three hundred fire marshal. For purposes of discussion, I'll make a motion that we accept Department three hundred fire, fire marshal at the proposed amount of one hundred eight thousand, fifty-seven dollars.
Second.
Discussion.
Sorry.
Brian?
Can you explain, uh, the salaries? Uh, is the fire marshal's salary a hundred and one thousand or is that including part-time people instead?
That includes, uh, the part-timers. There's, um, a blight, uh, not director, a blight, part-timer, and an assistant fire marshal.
Any more discussion? Okay, um, we have a motion on the table. It's been seconded. I'd ask all those who are in favor of accepting Department three hundred fire marshal at the proposed amount of one hundred and eight thousand, fifty-seven dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Done. Next is Department three thirty registrar of voters. Uh, for purposes of discussion, I'll make a motion that we accept Department three thirty registrar of voters at the Board of Selectmen proposed level of one hundred, ten thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Was there?
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Wendy?
Was there something in their account that their salary increase that they wanted was in here?
Yeah, so.
Or?
We had taken it out.
Okay.
Brad and I met earlier on. They had put it in originally, the twenty-six hundred dollars. But it's gotta be approved by the Board of Finance.
Right, so.
So we put it over to wage contingency.
Okay, so.
But it's been put back into this account, which.
By?
I don't agree with it.
By whom?
The Board of Selectmen. And they took it out of wage contingency. So it's, it's in the budget. It really belongs in wage contingency, not here. It's, it's a wash. It's, you saw the negative twenty-six hundred, you see the positive twenty-six hundred here.
But to move ahead and to do it consistently, it should be in wage contingency and not in here.
Correct.
Departments don't get to put in their own increase.
Well, elected officials.
Right, well, and, and even department heads don't get to pick their own salary.
Brian?
Do we have the power of the Board of Finance to move this into wage contingency?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you approved their salaries, all elected officials. So somewhere during this process, you're gonna have to, you know, address that.
Rich, can you ex- explain why it was moved, it's been moved back and forth? Is there any rationale?
It's just that Matt had worked on it. I, I can't tell you the reason why. I, I agree with it. It should be back in wage contingency.
Same thing.
They're asking for their own money. You know, it was proposed to us by, it is the first selectman and.
Just for convenience.
Listening to the conversation there now about it, I, I believe it belongs to wage contingency. It should be.
Modified motion, okay?
Yeah. Can I make a motion to, before we approve this budget, to move that to wage contingency, to twenty-six hundred?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion, amended motion, excuse me, amended motion, that, uh, we'll have to get the line item, hold on. But the total amount in the account goes down to one oh eight eighty. And the specific account is. Three, yeah, one zero one.
I'm sorry, what is it? Five, one, zero, one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, uh, we have to bring that number down as well, right? So fifty-one.
To forty-nine, three fifty.
So let's do the, let's do first, I guess, the motion for Department three thirty, line item one oh one. A motion to reduce the amount recommended by the Board of Selectmen down to forty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
And may I amend your amendment to increase account?
Wage contingency?
Wage contingency number, uh, four twenty-three-five-three and increase that by twenty-six hundred. So we just do it.
One time?
One time.
You don't think we're gonna remember?
Well, let's say we can say we're done.
Let's do it. Okay, so you're gonna amend four twenty line?
Yeah, hold on. Let's, let's just parse it. Let's get rid of three thirty first and then we'll go to four twenty. All right, so, um, again, modified motion, Department three thirty, line item one zero one, reduced to forty-nine, three fifty. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, done. Then we need to do the, uh, uh, total in the department. And there's an amended motion to accept total Department three thirty for an amount of one hundred and eight thousand, zero eighty. Brad, if I did the math right.
Second. Resorting back to that.
Yeah.
This.
All right, the Board of Selectmen recommended one ten, six eighty. And we're bringing that down to, by the twenty-six hundred to one oh eight eighty.
Yep. They're just restoring what they have. Second.
Do I have that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Everyone, okay. All right, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now we gotta jump over to, to make sure we kind of don't lose this.
Four twenty.
To four twenty. Uh, I actually have four twenty in, in one of the category threes. Uh, so maybe.
Oh, we can hold it off. I withdraw my amendment.
All right, so four twenty, three fifty, plus twenty-six hundred, we'll do that one.
The twenty-six hundred's right next to it.
Yeah, I know.
Really took it out, so it'll be pretty easy to smooth out.
So I guess we're done, right? We are done with three thirty registrar voters. Is that right, Brad, do you?
Yes.
Next depart, we, we're good? Next department for four, excuse me, three forty. For purposes of discussion, I will make a motion that we accept Department three forty town boards and commissions at the Board of Selectmen recommended amount of fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Discussion.
Bob, the reduction, uh, was just a charter? Because the commission is over, now you back that money up, up of that?
Yeah, we had originally budgeted five thousand dollars figuring that it might go into this fiscal year, but.
They're done with it.
I guess it's now done, right? So take the five out.
We wrap it up at the next Board of Selectmen meeting.
And then the increase in planning and zoning is additional help, is additional manpower hours, part-time? Is that right?
What was that, Dailly?
Um, there's a, there's a sixteen thou, and it's a five thousand dollar increase for planning and zoning. Anne, I don't.
We're on three forty.
Three forty?
Which has on three forty, yeah.
No, but three, three forty is town boards and commissions, so.
That has.
Finish the thread. Do you, okay, because Wendy's got the same thing.
I think I remember them saying they need some, some additional man-hours in planning and zoning.
No, it wasn't man-hours. It was, um, they're advertising.
Oh, right, advertising, yeah. So that was what it was.
They were gonna miss the internet and.
This town board is for secretaries and, and.
Recording minutes and stuff.
Recording minutes and, and those, those people.
So what's the extra five thousand then? Is it advertising?
No, but it was, they had the money for the charter revision.
It's a new town.
That's not, what she's talking about is planning and zoning, one of five thousand.
But planning and zoning, two fifty is a, is a count.
It's under three forty.
Under three forty.
On this sheet.
Five oh five, planning and zoning, five thousand.
All right, I'm sorry. Time out. Brad has his hands raised. Let's, let's see if we go to a source of truth.
Sorry, I got a little.
Go.
So the majority of the money that comes out of this count is to Hearst Media Services. So it's the News Times advertising. It's this part of this boards and commission is not for meeting minutes, it's not for anything that. It's mailings with the Pitney Bowes machine and Hearst Media.
Thank you.
All right, I'm, I'm sorry. It's late, been up too long. What does that mean? Does that mean there's no adjustment?
So they, they're looking for an increase because they anticipate more.
News Times fees.
Yeah.
In this three forty account.
Three forty, five zero five, yes.
And Board of Selectmen felt like they didn't need it.
No, that's a charge.
So it was just for the.
It's different issues.
Charter revision that we took.
It was the same account with two different lines in that account. They cut the charter, but the, the increase that everybody's talking about is the News Times under planning and zoning for legal notices.
But it wasn't ten thousand in there last year for the charter?
They're done with charter though. Charter was budgeted last year twelve-five.
Right.
We had requested five thousand thinking it was gonna keep going into twenty-one. You're saying it's not, so the five thousand was removed. So charter went from twelve-five to zero in the Board of Selectmen budget. The planning and zoning was budgeted in twenty-twenty for eleven thousand, three hundred. Beth, who oversees that, requested an additional five thousand dollars because of the cost of legal notices.
It's in here already.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's the point. So.
It just happened to be the five thousand number, that's what you.
Same number, yeah, Brian.
I have two questions. First one is for Brad, or Bob, Brad's in front of us. What did planning and zoning actually spend in, uh, advertising last year?
Uh, in twenty nineteen, they spent ten thousand, six hundred. Twenty eighteen, they spent twelve, six. In twenty seventeen, they spent thirteen, five. But I think she mentioned that it was anticipated additional cost as well, not just trending.
No, I'm just.
Yep, no, I'm just.
And then my next question, and again, I think it's just kind of for accounting purposes. Charter revision, is there a better place to put that than in an operating budget? Just because it varies so much from budget to budget. I mean, you know, we're putting that as an operating expense, but it's not a true operating expense because we're not doing it every year. So you have these fluctuations in the budget, so we're not really. You know, is there, is there a way to do it as a cap, like, as, as a capital expense someplace else in the budget? Do you, do you understand what I'm saying in terms of operating expenses, like, you know?
I mean, but it's not really big. It's not like, um, um, when we, the assessor does their revales, okay? And it may cost us two or three hundred dollars, a thousand dollars. We set aside, you know, like fifty grand a year in C N R and we appropriate that amount of money. But this is, you know, I mean, you're talking about ten or fifteen thousand for maybe two years, maybe three, you know?
It's every five years.
Yeah, and it happens every five years, but it takes a, a year and a half to do, you know, and it's just a legal fee, so. I don't know of any other place to, to put it, you know, and it really, it's, it's really an immaterial amount when you look at the entire budget, you know? If it was big, then yeah, we would do it like the, the, the revale, you know, and it's, and set, if it was twenty-five thousand a year, then maybe we would do that ahead of time and set it up.
Okay, I'm sorry, I had a little family thing I had to deal with, so I missed out. Look.
We're, we're, I think we.
We're good on three forty.
Bob schooled me in accounting.
Yeah. We're, we're, we're set on, uh, town boards and commissions. And the discussion were the increases in planning and zoning, C B A and L E N S.
Okay.
And Bob gave us all solace and comfort.
Okay, um, as he often does, with, with Brad in support, so.
Brad is solace.
With, with, with a motion on the floor, seconded, uh, although, oh, I'm sorry. Are we done with discussion?
We're done with discussion.
So with a motion on the floor and seconded, I'd ask those who are in favor of accepting Department three forty. Yes?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. That was a shame. It's gotten here.
Town boards and commissions at the Board of Selectmen proposed amount of fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. The next category, one department is three ninety employees benefit, employee benefits. For purposes of discussion, I'd make a motion that we accept Department three ninety employee benefits as proposed by the Board of Selectmen at a level of six million, three hundred, ten thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. All, oh, excuse me.
Second?
Say, discussion.
Bob, could you, uh, kind of explain the increase in FICA, about twenty three, five, thirty one?
Well, salaries go up. FICA is a function of salaries, seven point six five percent. So every dollar we pay, we gotta pay seven point six five percent of that number. Employee pays seven point six five and we pay.
And so, so you calculate, that's a calculate, calculated increase, based on the two percent and oth- other departments.
Projected salaries for the year.
Okay.
Wendy? Yes?
You giving up here?
You over.
Okay, thanks. Um, thank you.
I call Wendy out of the corner of my eye for a second.
Um, the, the departments that had personnel increase requests, have you increased the three ninety employee benefits to cover the insurance?
You mean the wage contingency?
No, the employee benefits, the medical, to reflect those additional positions.
Oh, yeah, 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 those numbers are in there.
They're in there, so if we do not, let's say, put any new headcount in, we could potentially reduce employee benefits by how much per person? How much do you have budgeted, twenty grand?
Twenty two. Twenty two probably, yeah.
So. Just to keep that in mind.
Does your four oh one K matches go in, in this line for like the pension, or where do you see that, like for the employees who have four oh one Ks?
Uh, yeah, it's in, um, the employee pension, that piece, not the police. But the employee, the four oh one K, yeah, the six percent. They put in six percent, we put in six percent. But then you also have the defined benefit plan too. You know, that we have to fund based on the actuarial, uh, calculation.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It's also board of vet employees.
They're in there.
Are in there.
Board of vets pensions are in there?
The town, uh, in the town side, yeah, you've got the, the administrator salaries and I think, um.
Para.
Paras, there's, there's two or three categories.
Yeah.
Cafeteria workers.
Anybody that's not on the teacher retirement plan.
Falls under our pension.
Town pension.
There aren't a lot of people, I think you were explaining to me, there's what, like seventeen administrators or something along those lines and then.
Yeah, but then you got the other ones there, but you gotta remember too, there's, this calculation includes the co shares. And every contract has a different percentage. You know, it could be eighteen percent, seventeen percent.
And when you say, sorry, Wendy, when you say administrators, that's not school administrators, cause then on the teacher retirement plan.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understood, yeah. Small A.
Well, when you say that, comes up almost a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand in this line when you throw in the school expenses?
On, on, uh, the four oh one K?
Yeah. I mean, let's say the average school employee who's an administrator makes a hundred thousand a year, I would say, right?
Yeah, but you gotta look at the timing of it, not all of them, not all of them are on four oh one Ks. That changed at different times. We just introduced the four oh one K recently, within the last five years, so. I mean, people that are not on the four oh one K are on a defined benefit plan. But so, that's included in, in, uh, the calculation from the actuar, actuary.
But shouldn't this expense go back to the board of vet? If, why is, why is it found on the town side?
Well, I mean, we've got, in our budget, we've got close to seven million dollars of board of vet expenses in here. It's, that's the way, apparently the charter.
The way it was broken up.
Uh, I just, with the pensions, it just seems like that's, I, I mean.
Yeah.
Just doesn't make sense that it's falling in this, since it's totally separate pension system and.
Well, it's the same pension plan.
Well, no, I'm just saying the school has their pension plans, but specifically, you know, this is, people could look at this and say, okay, the town side. Is got an additional one point, whatever. If it's a hundred fifty thousand, if it's two hundred thousand, who knows? But assume when everyone's on a four oh one K, it's one point seven million, everyone's making a hundred thousand, you have seventeen employees.
I, I don't think anybody's making that much on the four oh one K. I mean, that's a concern, the insurance and pension commission.
I'm talking about their salary, so.
Yeah, I know that, I know that, but that's a concern with the insurance and pension commission that when we went to the four oh one K, that people will retire from the town and may not have an adequate pension plan under the four oh one K.
I'm just worried about the accounting side of it where it looks like.
Presentation.
Correct, that's all I'm trying to say, is, I'm not arguing numbers with you, I'm just saying, I'm looking at this saying, okay, well, if part of this is a school, that should really be on the school's side, correct?
No, it's, it's part of the town budget. And like I said, I mean, almost seven million dollars is included in this budget.
This is a bigger issue than what we're going to deal with in this budget, because there are a number of those accounts. Cynthia, hold on, there's only, Wendy's had her hand up longer.
Wendy?
Wendy, Wendy, Wendy.
But I take the point, and maybe Bob and Brad, you guys can help us, I think you all have that schedule and maybe share it with the board of finance, the school expenses that are on the town side.
I'll bring it down tomorrow.
Yes, Wendy, sorry.
I would like to make a, um, amendment that we table this account. Um, to one of the other nights, because if we are funding employee benefits for new employees that we may or may not be hiring. I think that we might have some adjustments that could be made to this account.
Second.
Thank you, my new best friend.
And presumably that's the, where, where are the headcounts?
Uh, police department, um.
Fair, well, yep. We'll move this to category three.
Category three, yeah.
What's that?
Hurry, get three categories.
Cat three? That's a pretty easy one, it's fine. Okay, so, um, I rescind the motion. And we just move on with this being in a later discussion.
Okay.
Let's move it to category three.
Yeah, well, that's.
Just before we move on, move on.
Wait, wait, Cynthia, hurry.
No, no, it was about what Brian.
Continuation, second question?
Yes. Can we get the, um, uh, cost that you have budgeted for this? Associated? For all new employees, cost.
I don't break, uh, I, 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 you can see it right here. Um. The pension plan, you're talking about the pension plan, the hospitalization.
Now, I'm talking about the med- hospitalization.
The hospitalization, two million, nine forty six?
Yes.
That's the amount.
No, we have not, for the new employees that are included in this budget request, their medical coverage does not come to two million, nine hundred and thirty.
No, no.
But.
Twenty two thousand.
Twenty two thousand times.
So if you got two, that's forty four thousand.
Okay, twenty two thousand times whatever, okay.
Two.
Are you gonna vote on the amendment table? It was first and second, or she made the motion that she.
I withdrew, I withdrew.
So you're just gonna re-drew?
Yes. By the way, Brad reminded me, because Matt was pulling out the one. They had already adjusted down by twenty two thousand.
So there's only one additional new full-time hire in this number at approximately twenty two thousand dollars.
Okay, so the.
What position is that?
Police officer.
I thought there were still two.
There was, but for our planning purposes, cause we didn't wanna overstate this account. Matt had been talking about, when he presented to the board of selectmen before all the presentation, he had talked about doing one police officer instead of two. So we went with the one number, we went with one police officer instead of two. Figured that that gave us a little bit of money if one was hired and less of a shortfall if two were hired. It was a plan to try to get a good number as best we can.
And that twenty two is a combination of pension, FICA, uh.
That's just.
No, that's the highest.
Just insurance.
Yes.
Just insurance. So there would be. If it's a single person, it's gonna be less.
Right, but there would be oth- other amounts in here, some of these other buckets, correct? Were that, for those additional personnel to kinda win these points.
We will link this department, this, the, excuse me, we will link the discussion of this department. With the police department discussion, cause I think that's the only other place.
Right, but the request from Wendy was to be prepared for the amounts. So we know the twenty two thousand dollar amount, and, and the point is that in these other, uh, buckets, there might be some additional monies.
Yeah, why don't we work that up?
Know what that, know, know what those elements are, so that, that's what.
Yeah, I know, we should wanna request to that, Mike. Cynthia, go.
Yeah, I was just gonna talk about what Brian was talking about, so that we're tabling this in and can talk about it then another time. And then Delene was next.
I just have one question. So, um, I think I understood this discussion, that there may be school administrators also in the four oh one K in this bucket, is that correct?
So, in the, there are school employees that are not part of the teacher retirement plan. Their pensions get charged to this account as part of our actuarially determined contribution.
So not, not the seventeen people who are in the administrators' union and enjoying the.
Not that.
So it's not the superintendent, it's not, it's not any of the principals, you're talking the Teriyansky and office staff. They're not, um, they are not in the teacher retirement plan.
So, here's my actual question. Uh, they're talking about hiring an assistant principal for Johnson, does that impact us in any way?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Um, just to Robert's point, so, and I'm just using an easy number, so if a police officer's salary is fifty thousand, chances are their fringe benefits are like ten point something, so. There would be an additional five thousand in savings that could come out of this, out of that line, correct?
Well, you know, it depends on whether the person is single.
Well, fringe benefits are social security and workers' comp.
What was projected in this?
Yeah, but if you look at the, the hospitalization.
But what do you predict?
So it could even come down even further, is what you're saying?
No, it'd probably go up higher. Based on salary of fifty thousand, is that what you're trying to calculate?
I was, you know, he brought up social security and workers' comp, that would probably come out to like five grand on a fifty thousand dollar salary, right? If social security's seven point six five.
I think a police officer workers' comp is probably, what, four or five grand?
It's five percent.
Five percent, that's twenty five hundred.
That's high.
Yeah, it's high, it's high.
It's two point something.
I mean, you're gonna get those high calculations on the more dangerous.
But we could remove that, if, let's say any town employee, not, not to pick on police officers, if we remove, you know, whatever, we could take that additional savings out of that.
But you're not gonna take it out of workers' comp.
But you'll take it out wherever you say, right?
Well, you could take it out of the calculation of FICA. Workers' comp is a number we get from the insurance company.
Oh, so you have a flat rate?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it's not done like in our business where it's done by the hour, when you're paying the employee the hour?
No, they'll come in at the end of the year, or sometime during the year, and they'll do an order, and that's what I was saying, sometimes you get a, um, a refund, sometimes you pay a smaller amount of money.
They work more overtime and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, alright.
But I think the, the point is, I'm sorry Cynthia, just a second to finish that point, that I think combining Robert and Brian is if we can have for tomorrow, and if it goes into Thursday, but the next time we talk about. Count departments that have headcount, and I believe the only department that's suggesting additional headcount is police department.
The police department.
Will have a better understanding of what num- what will be the actual impact if we were to change the recommend, recommendation of the board of selectmen and the impact on this account or any other account.
Two other departments did, did request part time.
Yeah, but not.
Which, which part time.
No benefits. Not benefits, it's all track and services.
But there's still FICA, there's still social security, you still have social security in those numbers.
Alright.
But, I mean, that's, again, it's a small number. It's in and out, it may go up and may go down.
I get it, I understand.
Cynthia.
Oh.
I mean, you can't fine tune it that closely, really, when you're dealing with a.
I'm just trying, I was just trying to understand, um, what, you know, Robert, Brian are saying, and because Bob Kay, you said that it depends on whether they're married or single, what the amount is, and so, the question is. And I, maybe I, it was answered and I didn't hear it, that in this account is factored in, the benefits for the requested additional personnel. Is that?
So, so you would use twenty two because that's for a two-person plan, medical plan.
Okay.
If it's single, it's gonna be ten, twelve thousand, if it's family, it's gonna be thirty something.
Okay, so you just put in twenty two, I'm just hedging on that one, right?
And sometimes that changes during the course of the year too, so there's fluctuations in that account.
Okay, so the question is, if they don't hire two people, if we, uh, say no more, then you can't have two police officers, then that means you would deduct forty four thousand from this, in the budget, from this account.
No, what Brad said was Matt and Brad had adjusted that account for only one, so it's only twenty two thousand dollars.
Okay, so we would be able to deduct that from, okay, thanks.
And, and Brad, you say, whatever other expenses, whatever the other variable expenses are, you'll let us know.
It's gonna be small, it's gonna be, uh, whatever the salary is in FICA.
I understand, just whatever it is, we'll have a more informed discussion. Alright, so we, we table that discussion.
I don't think we voted on.
I withdrew the motion.
Oh, you withdrew it, okay.
So moving on to what I have is the next category one department, it's four ten utility charges and services. For purposes of discussion, I'll make a motion that we accept, as proposed by the board of selectmen, the amount in department four ten utility charges and services of two million, five hundred, ninety nine thousand, seven hundred and forty eight dollars.
I'll second.
Discussion. Oh, is that there, sir?
Yeah, um, so, they, the, it was mentioned that there's a projected income stream for the track and field house, and I was wondering if anyone knew what that projection was?
No, you gotta ask the board of vet.
Okay.
It doesn't go to us, it goes to the board of vet.
I understand that, I still thought maybe there was a possibility that our controller would know that number. So when we get to board of vet, then maybe I will ask.
Fine.
Can, uh, we just discuss? The possibility of cutting ten thousand from three twenty one utilities?
Yes, we can discuss it, absolutely. So, amended motion. To reduce department four ten account five, three, two, one by ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Discussion.
I guess my thinking is, you know, with the solar projects we have, and we're not a hundred percent sure, but we're expecting some savings, we're still increasing the line by. Looks like, correct my math, if I went wrong, twenty five plus forty four, I mean, we're still, we'd still be increasing it by almost sixty thousand with the ten thousand dollar cut.
Well, again, that, that sixty is, um, thirty gas, which we're not gonna be able to affect. So the ten thousand's gonna come out of the thirty electric, so that's taking basically the electric down to twenty.
Utilities is two million, two hundred seventy four thousand, three hundred and forty seven.
Yeah.
I'm talking about account one, three twenty one.
Yeah, which is a sixty thousand dollar.
Unless I said the wrong one, it's two million, three forty four. I meant, I meant to say account five, three, two, one, hopefully we did. That's utilities and the total amount in that account is two million, three hundred forty four thousand, thirty seven.
So they added seventy thousand, I'm just asking to back it back to sixty thousand. Increase, it's still a sixty thousand increase over last year, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, so what was the rationale for increasing it by seventy thousand dollars?
Well, the electric and the ga- the gas represent thirty thousand a piece.
The gas is a separate line item here.
Just see.
No, it's, it's in utilities.
So gas.
The gas is totally different, utilities is for the building.
We're still at sixty thousand.
There's natural gas, gas, we, what you see here is gas to run, um, cars and our trucks.
Bob, do you think we'd be okay, we could survive with a ten thousand dollar cutter, I mean, it's still a sixty thousand increase in the line?
Not there's gonna be a shortfall, and then there's other departments that cover that, so. You know? I mean, it's not like there's a buffer in there, you know, we calculate it based on what, I mean, if, if gas prices fall, if, if electric prices fall, then yeah, I mean.
Did, did Cynthia?
Oh, she seconded it, good.
Gotta start somewhere.
Hmm?
Gotta start somewhere.
Alright, well, let's, let's order. Motion on the table, it's been seconded, purposes of, um. Saying it again, motion is department four ten, count fifty three, twenty one, reduced by ten thousand dollars so that the revised total is two million, three hundred thirty four thousand, thirty seven dollars. Brad, do I have that right?
To me?
Two, three, three, zero, three, seven. Two, three, three, zero, three, seven. Which number are you looking for, sorry, I was entering it in.
Yeah, yeah, the total is currently two million three hundred forty four thousand thirty seven, the proposed motion is to reduce that by ten thousand. Revised total, I believe, is two million three hundred thirty four thousand thirty seven dollars.
Yes.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you for that number again, please?
Sure, um, we have to do the whole department.
What's the bottom line line?
Well, we haven't done bottom line yet, um, yeah, no worries, uh, bottom line, uh, uh.
It'd be two million five hundred and eighty nine thousand seven forty six.
Hope I have some free.
Seven forty eight, sorry.
Right, so now a motion for the total in department four ten of a revised balance, two million five hundred eighty nine thousand, no?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, two million five hundred eighty nine thousand seven forty eight. All those in favor, please signify by, wait, do I have to make a motion?
Motion.
I need a motion, sorry.
You made the motion, I need a second.
I second.
All right, second.
Thank you.
We don't need discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, okay. All right, my, my next category one account is department four forty debt service. And it's actually the last one for two. For purposes of discussion, I make a motion that we accept at the Board of Selectmen's recommended amount for department four forty debt service a total amount of five million one hundred eighty five thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose. All right, that is it for category one, we're at about the three hours mark. My, uh, my recommendation is we call it quits for tonight.
You made all ones, you, you got done with the ones?
I've done all my ones. It leaves.
One, one, one one is tabled.
Yeah, exactly, so.
So you need two other ones.
Good point, fifteen of the sixteen ones, it leaves twenty two departments left for tomorrow. Uh, sixteen, what I call category two, and then the top five, which now has, um, employee benefits kind of linked to police station.
So, is the total that we cut tonight ten thousand dollars?
Twelve thousand six hundred.
Two thousand six hundred.
Yeah, yeah, I got, let's move it.
No, only ten thousand, I mean, the other twenty six hundred is gonna be.
Right, but for tonight, tonight, we cut twelve thousand six hundred, we're gonna put two, twenty six hundred back in tomorrow.
Yeah, I guess, if you wanna call it that, I mean, you did quote twelve six, but your other two sixes going back.
I just saved a motion to it.
I, I know.
No, we, we said, we're.
Seven, yeah, seven o'clock tomorrow.
Move to adjourned?
Motion to adjourn, uh, second, second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. No, thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, thanks all.